Good evening. We are going to hereby convene the Rockport Short Term Rental Workshop. We are just here to get resident input on the topic of short-term rentals, which, as you know, is an issue that's being addressed in municipalities across the country and has certainly been addressed in a number of municipalities here in Maine. The topic was recently addressed by the Rockport Ordinance Review Committee in the spring of this year. After several meetings with the topic on the agenda and some fairly brief discussions on point, the committee agreed that the topic should be the subject of a public workshop to gauge resident views on point. Initially, the committee recommended that the workshop be held by the Planning and Review Board, but after discussion at a select board meeting, the select board decided to hold the workshop at this level. Just a couple of things I wanted to mention before we get started. I think, Bruce, I think there's going to be -- do you have the document that has the kind of pros and cons of short-term rentals?
I don't think so.
To display up there? I thought we were going to do that.
It didn't come through on the --
It didn't come through.
Oh, that's too bad.
You want me to send you a picture?
Oh, that would be, that would be great, yeah. Because if we can display that, I think that will be really helpful and give everybody kind of a starting point to agree with or not agree with in their comments. Anyway, it's not supposed to be a complete list. It was a list that Bill Napower had put together previously for us and that the ordinance review committee had used as a springboard for their discussions. I think it would be helpful. And one thing I learned out of the ordinance review committee meetings when I was the liaison at that time to that committee was that we really are focusing on situations where the residents or owners of the house are not in residence. You know, there is a distinction in our ordinances and there is a distinction, I think, in terms of the policy discussions as to whether or not you're renting out a room or two rooms to someone while the owner is there versus renting out an entire residence and the owner is not present. You can certainly comment on either of those situations, but we should just be clear if we're commenting on one or the other. And lastly, just when it comes to the question of whether or not the select board will lean toward any kind of regulation of short-term rentals, that's to be saved to another day. We're just taking resident input today and there's no, not necessarily discussion coming out of the select board, that's up to the select board, but certainly no decision coming out of the select board today. And regulation can range anywhere from, you know, regulating the use or frequency of short-term rentals to simply requiring licensing and certain requirements. Doug and I had both attended a very helpful MMA workshop in Belfast a few months ago where the various options and pros and cons to those options were discussed. So unless the board has any opening comments they want to make, we can just open it up to public comment.
I'd just like to make one, if I could, and that's, my intent here is to listen to input and not discuss pros or cons. Certainly, from a regulation standpoint or ordinance standpoint, if any, there are hundreds of examples of ordinances and other regulations that have been developed across the country around this subject. And, you know, when we're talking about short-term rental, it's not just one type of rental or another. It's, it's not company A or company B, it's the concept of a short-term rental for overnight stay in lieu of hotel or motel. So, that's where we are on that one.
Anybody else? Does Joe anything you wanted to add?
No, I think you've summarized it well.
Okay, great. So the floor is open for anybody who wants to make a comment, to come up to the microphone and do so, please.
I think it'd be helpful to see if you have a party before I heard you say that.
Do you have the list?
I'm confused on what we're commenting on so far.
Just the concept of short-term rentals, the concept of whether or not the town should consider any kind of limitation on them. Because there are some people who have expressed concerns about, about them and the use of them in Rockport, so.
Maybe while we do this, I, I've heard from several residents who have just had experiences with loud noises, parties, having to get back out of bed, get dressed, go next door, ask the people who are having the weekend of their lifetime, and then next weekend there will be another party coming in and having another weekend of a lifetime. So I've just, that's sort of what I've heard from a few people is just concerns that there's, it's changed the way it feels to live in their house.
Yeah, and while we're on that, and just to get things started, I've heard from a number of residents, several residents, I should say to pin it down better, that they feel that their neighborhood is changing because of the frequency of, and the number of places in their neighborhood that are being used for short-term rentals. So, those are the kinds of things we're talking about. You know, the whole point here is the question of whether or not the town might decide at some point, the question is whether or not we decide to pursue some kind of either limitations or licensing process or whatever, but we just want to hear what residents' concerns are, or those can either be in favor of or against, you know, modifications to the use of them. Here we go.
Came through, Doug.
If we can blow that up, we'll be good.
Yeah, I know, that's the best I could do, sorry.
And maybe, okay, so sorry, just, okay, I'm gonna, if you can't read these, which I don't think that you can, I'm gonna read some off, and, and you may just, you know, you obviously can't list these that quickly or anything, but let me just say, examples of some of commonly raised issues, and again, this came from Bill Napower's list, change in the character of a neighborhood that allows property owners to derive revenue from their property. Obviously, these pros and cons are mixed together, right? It's not pros versus cons, okay? Provides visitors a casual and intimate stay in Rockport. Inadequate parking or on-street parking. Noise parties late at night. Large groups of people parting. Provides a way to use large homes. Outside parties. Reduces long-term rental options. Reduces affordable housing options. Raises housing prices. Provides a new economic activity for property owners. Minimal neighborhood impact if properly managed. Non-resident owners, that's, yeah, okay. Visitors do not respect the neighborhood. Inflect of, influx of visitors, per an constant stream of visitors. Properties do not conform to life safety code. Properties are not subject to the same requirements of B&amp;Bs and hotels. And also, to add to that, I know an additional thing is that the taxation of those properties is done, you know, is continued to be done as a home, whereas businesses are taxed in a different way in which their personal property gets taxed. So there's an inequity, perceived inequity in the taxing of those homes, which are being treated as businesses. So that one's not on the list, but I've heard definitely from others. Okay, now, once again.
We listen.
We listen.
Can I speak to my chair?
No. You come up here and, we want the livestream to capture it, please.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Anderson, and I'm here really just to share my personal experience on this topic. So just speaking on the pros and cons, I totally see both side, both sides. Airbnb and short-term rentals is excellent for people who are visiting. I think they get a more authentic experience in a way, getting to stay in someone's home, maybe feeling more part of the community. You're giving money to families rather than maybe to a larger hotel. I think for the families who are offering these services, they're also, it's almost like a small business, in a way, a family-run business. And so I think those are all, those are all pros. My personal experience is, I come from the seacoast of New Hampshire. I came up to this area to take classes at Maine Media about seven years ago, and I completely fell in love with the area and specifically with Rockport Harbor. Since then, I've decided to move up here. And I began by looking on Craigslist to find a place to live, on different websites, I talked to realtors, and I ended up going through the Airbnb website in order to find a place to live because I wasn't able to find something that was affordable or the right fit for me. So I, which is not legal in terms of Airbnb, you're not supposed to go on there and message people with these messages, but I felt like I was down to no option, so I'd go on and message Airbnb owners and say, hey, would you be interested in a short-term rental during the off-season? And I got lots of replies that yes, that they would be interested, and so I started renting that way. But then summertime would come around and I'd be out of my living situation.
Kelsey, can I just ask a clarification? Did you, so, would you rent, like, you said a short-term rental during the off-season, but did you mean like months at a time?
Yeah, so typically, it's from, like, anywhere from mid-September into October and then till May. And so, for the past five years, six years, I've been doing this style of renting, and then it becomes like May or June, and all of a sudden, I'm like, okay, where am I gonna be living? And it's not like I waited till then to start looking. I've looked every single day on Zillow, Craigslist, the newspapers, like, it's a crazy hunt, every single day, searching for something that's a fit for me, and I'm pretty minimalist, so I'm not looking for anything crazy and that's affordable. And so I find things for winter rentals, but then when it's time for, like, summertime to come around, I still don't find anything. And by then, I, like, last year, when I had to get out at the end of the year, they said, well, do you want to come back in October? And I'm like, well, I really hope I'm gonna find a year-round rental by October, I'm sure I will, that's, it was a good three months. And I looked every single day, and I cannot express to you my experience. And I'm like, just one person, I'm extremely responsible, I express to people like how clean I am and that it will take care of their place like it was my own, and I, the small amount of options that presented, they fell through on the landlord's end. And in some scenarios, after I had given my deposit, after I had signed the lease, and it was just taken away from me. And I'm not just looking in Rockport, I'm looking anywhere from Camden to Port Clyde. So, it's been frustrating, I feel like I can't find a place to settle into that feels like my own because often places are furnished with other people's furniture, and I know I'm gonna be out. So it's like hard for me to root down and feel like I'm even safe and settled into a place before I have to get up and go through the same process again. And it just feels, like, I want to share that because I feel like I'm a younger person trying to come into the community, I love it here and I want to live here long-term, and I want to share that just to bring that awareness to the table that I can't imagine having a child or a family and going through this process. So, basically, in the summertime, I feel like, kind of like a gypsy, which like is kind of fun and everything, but I'm getting into my mid-30s, I work online, I'm a filmmaker, I'm a photographer, and I would love to feel like settled down and like there were some options. And I specifically love Rockport, I'm in a winter rental here right now, I'm so grateful for that and thankful for that. And, yeah, I just want to express that, that's my experience, and I also totally understand an owner's experience that's doing that route, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, John Veman, I'm a resident up on, in the village here on Pleasant Street. Seems like there's a couple of issues that are pretty high on my list, which is, speaks to what kind of a town do we really want? You know, do we want to just be a place where people can invest in a property so they can make money off of it? Or do we want to be a place where, you know, people, we encourage people to actually live here year-round? So, this feels like it trickles into the comprehensive plan level for us, a conversation somewhere in there. You know, speaking from my own personal experience, we have two properties, one directly next to us and one directly across the street, that just in the last year, or last year, year and a half, were purchased and then a ton of money put in them to renovate. Both buyers, their intent was never to live there, it was strictly to make it an Airbnb and a business. And again, I'm not saying that they don't, they shouldn't have the right to do that, but what happens is it, it changes how it feels when we're just sitting outside on our deck. You know, it changes how you feel when you wake up in the morning, there's a different car in the driveway across the street. Speaking to this notion that people get a better feel for the town when they do this, I'm like, where are you guys living to say something like, whoever said that? Where are you living to say that? Because we don't see these people, and this is not just one or two renters, they aren't coming out. I don't know what the heck, they, they just, most of them seem to, you know, burrow in, and occasionally, one will come out, but, you know, we even have a sign in our gardens, they walk through our garden, enjoy it. And you'd think, you know, they advertise on their websites, the rental, you know, right next to this great garden. That raises another point, which we started feeling when we were sitting there saying, you know, we've really become the product for this business. You know, our community is part of the product, just like on Facebook, you're, you're the product. So again, these are bigger strategic questions to ask about, what do we want to encourage here as a community and as a place to live? What have we created? And it's great that it's got value, and it's great that people want to come here, and I'm not saying that shouldn't happen, but this kind of an activity, to me, doesn't feel compatible, doesn't, it just feels off. And I'm not suggesting people shouldn't be able to rent a room in their place, I'm not suggesting we shouldn't have hotels, but what's it doing right to where we live? I can speak from, you know, it does something different to have essentially two mini hotel, you know, mini motels now on either side of our house on a very, you know, very small street. It just, something feels off. Other questions are to the young woman who just spoke about the inventory of rental properties. You know, it's, it's complete, you know, this is a huge problem that we have, we don't have enough affordable year-round rental properties here, apartments, that sort of thing. This is only making that problem worse. It's also inflating the property values because I can tell you, both these properties that were sold here, that I can relate to, you know, I'm sure they paid, I know they paid way over market value for them because they were valuing it as a business opportunity, not as a place to live. So I'm not sure how all that ripples into every, you know, the assessor's office and all that sort of thing, but it's not natural. It's, it's, it's an artificial stimulant that's being applied. So those would be my points for you to consider.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Next, Marcy.
Not smart, work with me. Marcy Kasas, I'm on South Street, so I'm not in the village. A little bit of background on me, we have a guesthouse on our property, and this June, my sister got married, so I converted it to an Airbnb to host her college friends, which was wonderful. And then after they left on the 15th of June, the 17th of June, I listed it on Airbnb, and I have been booked solid since, which has been a really wonderful experience for us and my tiny little family. There have never been any parties at my house, nobody's trashed anything. We've met some really great, interesting people who don't strike me as the type of people who would rent a hotel necessarily in Rockport. So as we attack this issue, I think it's important to look at it holistically. Look at the communities in which, all the different boroughs in which Rockport has, because this is kind of a heavy issue, and I absolutely understand where both, both of them are coming from. And I don't know that I would necessarily want that next door to me. Luckily, we're tucked up in the woods, so nobody, nobody sees the new car, the car in the driveway other than us. And it's on our property, so we can control who comes and goes, we're there. So keep that in mind as you explore, as you explore this. And we absolutely do have a housing crisis in mid-coast Maine. I have two other rentals that we have year-round, and I wish you would come to me because we had a year-round tenant in this guesthouse that we have, and it was a nightmare. She didn't pay her rent, I mean, it was hard to get her out, and doing it this way has been so much easier because Airbnb takes care of it all. And I have special insurance for that, and I do pay taxes on that, so, on the income that's generated from that. So, we also need to kind of look at what we have done to set these up because there has been an investment in it. So as we look to change policy, it's important to look at what is working, what's not working, and kind of meet in, meet in the middle a little bit, because there are some that are really, really working well. And we want people to be coming to Rockport to vacation. I often say to people, I live where you vacation. This is a spot where people come and tourists come, and we want them here. Our restaurants hopefully are thriving. Do we know if our hotels have lost revenues? Do we know actually how many Airbnbs are in Rockport? Do we know the types of people that are coming? Are these, are these people that would be coming and staying at our hotels if we didn't have the Airbnbs? I mean, there's so many different parts of this that we have to explore and, and look at. So I just want you guys to take all of that into account as you kind of move forward, and bring people in who have experience on, on both sides of this.
Thanks, Marcy. And just a couple of clarifying answer, or responses, I guess. I know Doug and I have tried to, to search the Airbnb, like, when we were at the conference, and hundreds of places come up between Camden and Rockport. However, you know, you're talking-
Well, and I have the number 320 in my head, just for Rockport alone, but I have no idea even where that came from.
Right, right.
But that's the number, for some reason, I have in, in my head, so.
There are a couple of sources that indicate that it's in the, in the hundreds, but I don't know that, you know, for a fact. So, and it's hard to get a handle on that for a number of different reasons we don't need to go into today. The second thing is, just, is to your comment about the tax, I was not suggesting that people don't pay tax on the income they get. What I understand, and Bill, you could probably explain this better than me, but in talking to Carrie, our tax assessor, he indicates that for businesses, you know, you're not only taxed on the income, you're taxed on the personal property that the business has. And in the case of Airbnb, we are taxing, or, you know, you're taxed on the basis of your income, but we are not taxing on the, on the basis of the personal property. So that's the inequity.
Well, I, I do get taxed for that property. My property taxes did, did go up quite a bit, not because of you guys, thank you, but I just paid my tax bills.
Well, they, all of our tax bills went up.
No, 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 and we know, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We know why.
We all know why.
And it's not sitting at this table. But, in any event.
It won't go there.
Yeah.
And that's the difference between real estate and personal property.
Yeah, that's the difference between being taxed, exactly. So your tax bills went up because of the real, the real property, but they didn't come up because there's been a personal property assessment.
Right, and I understand why my, I understand why my property taxes went up.
Yeah, yeah. But the personal property assessment between business and non-businesses is what I was referring to, just so that you know. It is different.
Right, but I, and I don't know if I necessarily consider myself a business in that sense, but, I mean, I guess that's up for debate as well.
Yeah.
I think that there's a lot of people in Rockport who struggle, and the fact that they can rent out their room to help them stay in their home is definitely not a bad thing. And it would be unfortunate if a couple of bad apples ruined it for the rest of us because we haven't had a bad experience. It really has been wonderful for my entire family. My kids are meeting people from all over, and so that's, it's been really fun.
But the one thing that's interesting, I think, about, about your scenario that you raised, is that I think the ordinance committee had talked about, you know, renting a room in the house while, while the owner is present versus renting an entire house. And then you have yet another hybrid in between there, which is renting an entire structure, but that is on your property while you are still resident.
Right.
In your own structure. So that's yet a third, you know.
Right, and we, we have multiple properties, and this is the only one, the one that's on our property that we converted to an Airbnb. We've kept the other two, the other three, as year-round rentals because we recognize the housing crisis.
Yeah.
We understand it. And so the housing crisis goes beyond, though, just trying, just a person, one person trying to find a place. When I rented my house on Chickewaiki this summer, I had more inquiries for Section 8 than ever before. Do you take vouchers? Do you take vouchers? And for that property, I don't. For another property, I do. And so it's looking at the housing crisis as a whole and holistically as well. There are people out there with vouchers that cannot find a place to live in mid-coast Maine. So, thank you. And this is a hard topic, and I appreciate you guys looking into it and giving us this opportunity to speak.
Appreciate your comments.
Don't mean to get in the way of anybody else who wants to speak, but could somebody, I mean, I've asked about that personal property tax issue. That has to be, that has to be voluntary, is what I understand. Is there, I mean, what, what does it really take to, does anybody have any experience with determining that bill? Can you tell?
Yes, so the, so the personal property tax, so if you're a regular business, we'll say you're a grocery store.
Yeah.
The personal property that you have in that store would be the cash registers and the shelving and the computer systems and the coolers and things like that. So it's property that generates income, that you use in your business to generate income.
So bring that down now to a-
Yep.
-one-room Airbnb.
Right, yeah. I think, I think it would be difficult, you know, renting out one room in a house would probably have a different definition than, than say, renting out a whole house.
All right, so take-
Or parts of a whole house, in, you know, in general.
Take a whole house.
Well, then you'd be looking at, you know, the beds and the furniture, so if you, if you run a hotel, for instance.
Would be the equivalent of assessing a hotel.
Yes, yeah. So the bed and the furniture and the TVs and things like that are considered, it's called personal property, which isn't the right, should be called business property is what it is, really.
Okay.
So that would be, that would be taxed, and there would be a, an assessment based on that.
Yeah. So my next thought is, is there, is there other models that you guys have seen where, just like you have different zones in a town, you can have different zones for some of the ordinances involving an Airbnb? Like, you know, what Marcy's describing, you know, it's out in the, it's out in a, I don't know how dense-
I'm in the woods.
Densely populated, but you said woods.
I'm in the woods, yeah. No, the woods.
Clearly, that's-
There are, there are, there are definitely models out there in Maine where some communities have already started tackling this issue, and there, there are many different examples where communities, you know, have, they ban it in the village area or the downtown area unless it's a, a single room with a resident, you know, in place. Or outside of the, the built-up area, if you will, the village or the downtown, you know, it's allowed if it's with different standards.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there are, there are examples out there.
Yeah, I, that, I, that would have appealed to me in my personal situation because it really has changed the character of the whole street, to have, now we've got three Airbnbs, three at least that I know of.
Yeah.
I'm guessing we're gonna probably have a couple more coming our way. And that's, that's like more, most of the people that now live on that street, so.
Joan, if I could add to Bill's comments, the, the range of regulation on this goes from all the way from one end to the other.
Yeah.
It, I mean, it, it's just unbelievable, and everything in between. There's probably a sweet spot in there somewhere. This isn't anything that the town of Rockport is inventing from scratch.
Right.
There are thousands of communities across the country that have ordinances and regulations regarding short-term rentals. They restrict at times how many days it can be rented, I mean, there's, there's, how many consecutive days by the same person? There's a whole lot of stuff.
Or how many rentals within a period or year.
How many rentals, how many people can be in one bed? I mean, it's-
Good luck, I know.
Well, and then there's issues, and, and, you know, we can't get into all this, but, you know, at least according to the workshop, and I'm not an expert on this topic, but the workshop we went to, we listened to the MMA council, outside council who came to that workshop, you know, talked about the zone- to that workshop, you know, talked about the zoning, but then, you know, there are things that the town can do when they go the zoning route, but then there are issues with respect to, there are some downsides to going the zoning route. And then there are some maybe upsides to going sort of a licensing route. And whether or not you can do that by zones, you know, is something that we'd have to, if we went down this road, we'd have to look into. So all I'm saying is, whether or not you go the zoning route or you go a licensing route, may have certain restrictions that we would, if we did anything, have to work within and have some, you know, confines.
Well, and as Jeff said, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. We're actually quite fortunate that Rockland has recently gone through this, and their code enforcement officer, John Root, is very well-versed in what Rockland went through to do this, and he was one of the speakers. And I bet it wouldn't take a huge amount of elbow-twisting to get, you know, John to come up here and kind of tell us what Rockland did to get it. And apparently, it's working pretty well down in there, so.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, David Cockey. Here, a little bit more with the mechanics and some things to think about, as opposed to terms of what kind of regulation may be needed. I've been attending the ordinance review committee meetings for a couple of years now, official alternative member, and I remember the discussions Deborah was at, which were quite interesting. And just a few things I remember from those. One is, just as a side note, but the term owner keeps coming up, in terms of the owner being present. I think there's a different term that's needed, because I'm guessing the intent isn't to say you have to be the owner with the name on the deed. If someone has got a long-term lease on a house, they could also be, you know, and a lease allows it, they could be renting a room in it, you know, that would be equivalent to the owner. Also note, and I didn't check the land use ordinance recently, but there is a category for rooming houses, which I think is defined as three or more rooms that are rented out. And those are restricted to certain zones and so forth. Now, to what extent that ordinance, that restriction gets enforced, I don't know, but clearly, you know, I think there isn't questions about, and that actually gets into a question about coming, come up with an idea, is it something that can be enforced and people will be willing to have enforced? Something else I remember came up in that discussion is, short-term rentals, in terms, you know, what's a short-term rental? We're talking about one night, two nights, or a week? You know, probably less than three months or two months. And that's actually not something that's brand-new in Rockport. You know, we've been here only a few years, but the idea is that goes back decades, maybe a century or more, with people being able to rent and are renting houses out. You know, a family will own a house, they may use it three weeks of the year, and then they rent it perhaps to the same people year after year. And that gets into the question also about, when you start looking at things, you've got the prototypical, stereotypical Airbnb, somebody's got a house there, you know, renting on a one-night basis. But I think when you start thinking about what to put in an ordinance, it gets a little bit more complicated than that. And so I just thought of a couple of different scenarios. One is, I think, as, you know, John mentioned, somebody, maybe they live two blocks over, maybe they live in Texas, buys a house as an investment, fixes it up, and starts renting, you know, either the whole house, or, you know, maybe they read the ordinance and said, "Okay, I can rent the upstairs and downstairs separately as two places," and they're renting it, you know, and they may stop by, they may engage somebody to handle the logistics for it, and they may stop by once a year, maybe not. So you've got that sort of experience. Then you've got more, you know, like, as Marcy said, of somebody who lives locally. Maybe they have a property, you know, a guest house on their property. I know when we were looking at places, we looked at one or two that had guest houses, and the real estate agent said, "Yeah, and you know, you can rent this out in the summer and help, you know, pay for your place." So people will buy places on that basis, or, "Hey, you know, this is a big house, we can afford to buy it," whether they're talking year-round resident, or they're just going to be summer residents, or snowbirds, or whatever, and rent. So you've got those sorts of folks, you know, they're present. Then you've got the folks who, you know, then maybe a house next door, so you've got all those situations. Another one, in terms of partying and so forth, I don't know. Are we, how much confidence is there that the complaints about parties are limited only to situations where it's guests, people are coming in paying money, and it's not a situation of, say, the owner's children are using the house for the weekend, and-
These are definitely Airbnb short-term rentals.
Okay, yeah, but I, you know, I think there've been a couple situations where it's been otherwise. But anyway, so you have a situation where maybe it's a place that somebody's bought, and again, and they are using two, three weeks out of the season, and then they want to rent it the rest, and that was part of the financial calculation. Or the family, a place that's now owned by three siblings, and we have some friends who have a place up on McGundercook, you know, and it's inherited, and a couple siblings own it, and they divide it up, and then various other members of the family use it, and, you know, maybe some of the younger generation bring their friends up and use it. And there's no money exchanged, but you can get a bunch of people coming in and out. So, because my thought is, you know, there's a lot of different situations. In terms of what's short-term, I know one idea that got floated at the ORC was, "Well, maybe we should prohibit rentals for less than like six nights." And then the real quick thought was, "Okay, if somebody's having a wedding, and they're looking for housing for the wedding," they'll say, "Okay, we'll rent it for six nights," and they'll only show up for the two or three they need, so that. The bigger issue about changes in the community, I mean, that's a real issue. That gets to be a real tricky and difficult one, when you start trying to affect that by regulation in terms of unintended consequences. Hard to know what those would be. So anyway, that's just some thoughts, not saying, you know, whether it should be regulation or not. Just what the licensing, et cetera, certainly, I think it would be reasonable to say there needs to be some sort of thing if money's being exchanged, so, thank you.
David, thanks. And I think your recitation of the different scenarios is a good approach, too, and something that, you know, as we look at this, we should probably be thinking of listing scenarios and making sure that we don't trip over ourselves, if we were to do something. I'm not assuming that we are. But the second thing I wanted to mention is, thanks for, you know, mentioning at the ORC, the reference to the boarding homes. I couldn't remember what the term was that was used in the ordinance, but I think, though, the point being that we do have a restriction on the boarding homes in our ordinances that we discussed briefly at the ORC, but we don't have any restrictions in the non-boarding home scenario, where you're talking about renting out the entire house. And so we recognize that difference at the ORC, and need to continue to, as I said in my opening comments. Thanks.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
This has major importance to our little family, this whole issue. And I want to make sure that I'm really clear on this, and clear to the community. And I've written a petition here that I'd like to read, it's pretty brief. "We're the Wallaces. We live at 226 Union Street. And we would respectfully ask the board to maintain the status quo, that is, non-regulatory restrictions, in consideration of the following information that pertains to us." What is "us"? "We moved to Rockport after visiting here for ten years, and purchased our house with, expressly because it had a carriage house on it, and that we were told that we could develop that, and make it an Airbnb, and we did." So here's my reasoning. One, we wanted to offset the extraordinarily high taxes in Maine. Maine's a wonderful place to live, but it has a high cost. In particular, a heavy property tax. We rent our carriage house apartment on a short-term basis from May through October. In two years of rentals, we have never received a single complaint of any kind, anytime, anywhere, from any neighbors or residents, never. Three, our renter clientele contributes significantly to the Rockport business community. Our most recent guest, four out of five nights, eight, two nights at 18 Central, two nights at Nina, night of June, because they couldn't decide which one they liked better. And that is so common. And as reflected in our own personal experience, we have had guests express interest. In fact, about two guests ago, we had another one who said that they liked their experience so much in Rockport that they're seriously considering, and some people are coming back now to take a look at property. We have that impact on this community. Also, our rental activity is published and open. There's no secret about it. We provide two tax streams. First, we collect Maine state lodging tax on all transactions. And second, we pay state income tax on all rental income. And if it came to a matter of a license, we would, if that's needed, we would do that. We'd compete with motels and hotels in Rockport. In fact, most of our, not 95% of our people, say that the only way they would stay in Rockport would be to stay at an Airbnb of the quality that we offer. I want to say, financially, as retirees, we need the income from our short-term rentals to offset the high taxes and cost of living here. Taxes here are pretty extraordinary. We had almost the identical property when we lived in Sarasota, Florida, just about debt on the same. And contrary to what people think, that with Florida having low, no income tax, that they would have high property taxes, that's not true. The tax on our home here in Rockport is slightly more than double the property tax that we paid for the same home in Sarasota, Florida. And so all we're trying to do is offset the impact of living here. In other cases, where there may be discourteous renters, and I'm sure there's some, our existing ordinances should be put into effect to correct them. Imposing across-the-board bans on home sharing would punish the innocent for the wrongs of a few. Rockport exacts a considerable property tax from us. We ask that the town not remove our property rights opportunity, which we use to defray our tax costs. And finally, I just want to say that someone said they don't like the idea that people in the community are changing the character. How about this for our situation? We live at 226 Union Street. The character of our living changes almost daily. We have people who park in our driveway, they use our driveway to turn around, they park in front of our house, and we would never, ever have given a second thought about ever complaining about that. And I wouldn't have thought about that until tonight. The character of our neighborhood changes all the time. That's Rockport. Thank you.
Thanks, Doc. You know, your situation seems to be somewhat analogous to Marcy's situation, because you have a separate structure on your property, you guys are resident there. I'm just observing that. I'm sorry?
Off-street working as well.
Yeah, yeah, interesting, okay. Thanks.
Deborah.
Yes. I'm Elizabeth Berry. I live at 21 Ammery Street. I live in a house that my grandfather purchased 102 years ago. And while he was living there with his seven children, he also took in boarders, maybe you call them, but they're just summer people, who having to do with the music colony here in town, back, I'm talking about the '30s and '40s, a long time ago. Then, after he passed, my mother was there in the house, and she had what was called the Heisted Homestead, and she rented rooms in the summer. And here I am. I've been living there 20 years now, excuse me. And I started doing Airbnb a year ago. So I've had two seasons. And I did it because I needed the money to pay the taxes, basically. 20 years ago, when I took over from my mom, I actually sold Goody's Beach to the town, because my property used to run down there, and I couldn't afford the taxes, and so I'll sell half the property. So for those 20 years, I've used the money from that sale, excuse me, to pay my taxes and to keep going. I did actually work until I turned 80. I'm 84 now, and I find that the way I can get a little more income is from this Airbnb. And all I have is, I allow one car to park in the yard, I allowed only two people, and they have to be quiet after 10 at night. It's like a sorority house or something in college, where I have these rules. And my next-door neighbor asked me this week if I had an Airbnb, and I said I did. She said, "Well, the only way I knew is because your last person came to my house by mistake." And so it's been that quiet, and it's just not been a problem from my next-door neighbor even. The people have been wonderful, they've become my social life. The people that were just there were from Lithuania. I would never have had that opportunity to meet people from Lithuania. And they found it on Airbnb, and one was a producer of one of the films that just won an award locally. I thoroughly enjoy these people. So I need the money, I want to stay in my family home, and for me, it's worked. I've had no problems with any of the people.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. And, you know, like this, your situation just emphasizes why any kind of consideration that the board has needs to recognize those people who come in and rent a room or two while you're there, versus maybe the problems that others might experience by the owner or whomever not being on-site and renting an entire house. Because you obviously are there to control the behavior-
I would always be there, yeah.
...et cetera, right? So, and that's something that the ordinance does allow, you know, as you know, our ordinance allows.
I just wanted to tell you my situation.
Thank you, no, thank you, it's very helpful to-
Very interesting.
Yeah, and, you know, there's several other people that we know, that we all know, that have some Airbnb rentals, where they rent out a room or two in their homes-
Yeah, sure.
...and with a similar kind of experience, I think.
Hi.
Hi.
Melissa McCool. I just wanted to add something to this fellow's general description of different scenarios. And one scenario that we've had here in Rockport for a really long time is the photo workshop. And then after that came the apprentice shop, I believe is what it's called in West Rockport, the furniture shop.
Yeah.
And what is, I know people come here to work at the hospital.
Traveling nurses.
Traveling nurses.
Oh, yeah, traveling nurses.
Yeah, so-
And we have a furniture shop at our house.
Yeah, and these are huge businesses. I mean, these are probably the three biggest businesses we have in town that use short-term rentals.
But can I ask, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but before I forget, and since Marcy's also talking about that, those kinds of rentals, though, are those, I mean, like a traveling nurse is usually a month or several- like a traveling nurse is usually a month or several months or something? I mean, we're not talking about a couple of days. I just want to clarify that.
Well, in terms of the situation, this summer I met one staying at the Geku Store, and she's at Penn Day, and I'm right around the corner, and my place would have been more affordable for her. So they're actually not looking right now at Airbnb, but I'm hoping to change that for us.
Right.
Because we know there's a nursing shortage.
Right, right, right. But, I mean, those, the only thing.
But the other two are weekly.
Yeah, those are weekly?
Those are all weekly.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Both of the workshops are weekly, and some of these traveling people might come from Portland for the weekend.
Yeah.
To work. So I just wanted to add that.
Gotcha.
And then to that, too, Samuset now doesn't have rooms during the winter. Oh, thank you. Year-round. And so what we're hoping for this winter, too, because we're in such close proximity to Samuset, people coming in for a conference who can't.
Hey there, because they don't have rooms available, will be able to stay at our house. So we actually put that on our site as one of our selling points. So, and to her point, right now, we have somebody at the furniture store, Craftsman Furniture over on Mill Street. We haven't had anyone from Main Media yet, but like Elizabeth was saying, she just had someone in for SIF. So it's bringing people in for these different things. We also have the Camden Conference coming up in the winter. There'll be housing for Camden Conference. And we recommend local restaurants. We recommend local bakeries and coffee shops. I mean, this is really a wonderful thing and can continue to be a wonderful revenue generator for a lot of the businesses in Rockport.
Hi, my name's Amanda Dwellie, and I'm currently renting my parents' Airbnb unit in Camden. Well, I'm planning to build a place in Rockport, and thinking about what I want to build in Rockport, I would definitely love to incorporate some revenue generation there and would consider a guest house or attached suite or something like this. So I definitely see all of the amazing benefits of Airbnb. I stay at tons of Airbnbs all over. I've seen in, I've probably been staying at Airbnbs for business travel and personal travel for five or so years, and definitely seen a trend nationally toward much more formal, permanent Airbnbs. It used to be that it was like, oh, we're going away for a week, or the house is open, we'll just clean up the house or clean up the apartment and have people rent there. And I've seen a lot of kind of stripped-down, solid rental houses kind of becoming the norm, which I could talk about. But what I wanted to share actually was a story of a friend of mine who moved to the area in May. She accepted a job in Rockland, kind of sight unseen, and really wanted to move for this job. She was very excited and had a two-year-old toddler, husband, and a dog. Couldn't, you know, came to look for a place to live, but at that point, she was going to join the kind of the summer housing market and couldn't find a permanent place to live. She couldn't even find a place to live for the summer. So she's probably been in four different apartments this summer. She really wanted to be close to downtown. She likes biking. She didn't have a car at the time. She, yeah, so four different places with a two-year-old. The two-year-old is at potty training age right now, and they know that they can't potty train their child because he's been exposed to so many different experiences and like kind of an unstable summer. So just observing that, just, it's really hard to find permanent rentals. And this is a person, she has an MBA from Stanford and an degree from Harvard, so it's not really an income problem. It's a supply problem. There just aren't rentals. I have another friend who moved up from Massachusetts in the middle of the summer last summer and had a really hard time finding a place to live, also jumped between different rentals and ended up moving back to Massachusetts because she never really felt that she could, you know, be part of the community or kind of felt a stable part of the community. And I think, I think it's a really hard balance how to keep housing units available for long-term renters who are a very important part of our community. And by kind of displacing in small ways long-term renters over time, I think that'll have implications for, you know, our school systems, the diversity of communities, people who can work here, people who can find jobs here. And thinking about what to do about this, I don't think I have a clear solution. I mean, I would love to think of, you know, more creative things we could do than just regulation to kind of incentivize, recognize, reward those owners who are keeping their rental units as long-term rentals. I don't know what that is, but it's a hard decision, seeing just multiple times more profit potential from an Airbnb for the summer than a year-round rental. So the math makes you really want Airbnb or place. What, you know, what can we do to give people more of a carrot to keep a long-term rental? In terms of the regulations, I know a lot of jurisdictions are moving to regulations. I don't really know if licensing would do much. I mean, if you're going to put in the effort to convert something to, you know, a rental unit that could bring in $5,000, $10,000 or more in revenue for the summer, I think Portland's licensing fee is close to $300. That doesn't seem like much of a, you know, hurdle or deterrent there.
I think in the licensing concept, at least according to the conference that we went to and discussions that we've had with John Root, who Doug Colte mentioned, in Rockland, the licensing aspect goes to, it's not a matter of bringing in, it's not so much a matter of bringing in money to Rockport for that activity, which it does, but it's not really so much that. As it is, through the licensing process, you can actually control, you can put restrictions on the license, like, for example, you can only license this number of days in a 365-day period.
Okay.
If you violate it, you get your license yanked and you can't ever rent for some period of time again.
Plus, it gives you a database. Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, yeah, it does. It provides you the database, because people have to come forward. If they don't come forward, then they're subject to penalties and violations of the town, you know, from the town. So it does give you that database, as Doug says, you know what you're dealing with. But you can also do those kinds of restrictions.
Yeah, okay.
So, I mean, it's effective in addressing those kinds of issues that you mentioned.
Yeah. And I like this discussion that we're having about some of the nuances and the situations. There are, I think, a lot of situations with more guest units, cottages, in-law apartments on the property where the owner is on-site. So that should, you know, in coming up with regulations or a policy, I like the idea of thinking about all those different scenarios.
And we can discuss that further this week. And we can discuss that further this week, if you'd like to volunteer to help.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Amanda. All right. Anybody else who wants to say a few words?
In 30 seconds?
No, there's a few more than that. Sure. Kelsey.
Kelsey Anderson. And, yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody for sharing the different perspectives tonight. I think it's all really interesting and everybody has validity to their experiences. And I just want to add one more thing in terms of thinking of trying to take care of everybody. And it seems like there's a somewhat of an emphasis on taking care of our people who are visiting. I think when we're talking about community and the foundations of community, that the people who are already living and working here should be priority in order to keep foundational value occurring. And so just finding a way to hold both of those groups of people in an equal importance. So the people who are visiting and adding value in terms of tourism, but also the people who are already living and working here, which in my experience is someone like me, and I think having more opportunity to year-round housing is, probably should be a top priority in terms of the people we're trying to take care of.
Okay, thank you, Kelsey. Anyone else? All right. Well, thank you very much, everyone, for coming, taking the time to come and express your views, concerns. I found this to be really helpful, and I'm sure the rest of the board did, too. And we are right on time to start our select board meeting at 6:30, too. Thanks again. This is just the beginning of the process, assuming there's a process.
Thank you.
Anything further? Thanks.